All right, the time is 5:31 PM on Monday, March 13th, and I'd like to call this work session to order. First is hearing from our lobbyists. So Mr. Romero, I see that you're on Zoom.
Yes, thank you. And capital success as a forum tonight as well. We, all three of us are here. So thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to, to talk to you about this past week in the session and to bring a couple of bills to your attention that we would ask you to take a look at. One is a bill that has not been introduced, but it's getting a lot of attention from both municipalities and counties. And then a, a water bill that specifically Senator Hendrickson and Senator Cleve Simpson asked me to speak to you about this evening. Just a factoid for all of you, the most access bills in the legislature this week were House Bill 1297, daylight savings time year round, and House Bill 1118 exempt state from daylight savings time. You can imagine why those were probably the most access bills if you had difficulty springing forward. And then, and then finally, the, the most access bill in the session thus far is House Bill 1230, which would prohibit assault weapons in Colorado, and that bill has not been heard. I just, I thought I would turn it over real quickly before I talk to you about the, the specific bills for, for our team to tell you about sort of what happened this past week and what took up most of the oxygen as we enter the 64th day of the session, we are past the halfway point.
Okay. Hi, everyone. Good evening. As Gil said, last Thursday was the official halfway point of the session. It's known that the Capitol is downhill day. So it's hopefully all downhill from, from there. Last week, I'm sure you've, you've seen in, in the news, last week, the, the schedule really got jammed up and stalled with four gun bills. And in addition to those four gun bills, House Bill 1202, which is overdose prevention center authorization, another one, I'm sure you've seen in the media. So House Bill 1202, the overdose prevention center, and House Bill 1219, waiting period to deliver a firearm. Those were, those were two of the bills that were debated overnight Thursday until about six in the morning on Friday in the House. Those both passed second reading. And then that very next day on Friday, the Senate picked up their three gun bills. SB 170 extreme risk protection order petitions, SB 168, gun violence victims access to judicial system, and SB 169, increasing minimum age to purchase firearms. And the Senate spent all day on that. So I tell you all that just to, just to highlight that the, a lot of committees changed last week, a lot of bills were pushed back, delayed until this week or further. And both chambers kind of cleared the schedule earlier on in the week to prepare to debate those bills as long as they did. So we're, we're looking forward to getting back to normal schedule this week.
Yeah. And, and, and just to that point, there are a number of bills that we had hoped to report to you this evening that will impact businesses in Southern Colorado and specifically in Pueblo. Those air quality bills were pushed back a week because of the debate on the gun bills. The two bills that I wanted to bring to your attention, we were on a stakeholder call on Friday. This bill has not been introduced yet. We sent you the fact sheet out on, on it. As soon as we get the bill on bill paper, we'll get you a draft of that, that it's the county revitalization authority bill. The intent of this legislation is to provide counties with the statutory authority to commit property tax revenue to a specified unincorporated area with multi-year fiscal commitments in order to capitalize infrastructure and other improvements necessary for development that provides desired public benefits. The stakeholder call that we were on, there were a number of people of, including legal counsel for the Colorado Municipal League on the call, and they were asking a lot of tough questions about, you know, the, the power of counties and the power of municipalities on this bill. Color, Colorado counties are challenged with properties limited by inadequate infrastructure, environmental contamination, and other site constraints that limit reuse, redel, redevelopment, re, and revitalization opportunities. When cities are unwilling or unable to annex these properties to provide municipal resources, and private developers are unable to capitalize the necessary upfront improvement costs, the properties infrequently remain derelict. So the key components of the bill that has not been introduced, but we will hopefully see, as I said, a draft in the next week. We will, if they have another shareholder, stakeholder meeting, excuse me, stakeholder meeting, we will make sure that the City of Pueblo is invited and any, the mayor or his staff or any member of the city council could participate in that stakeholder meeting. The key, key components of this bill, this amendment would directly impact incorporated jurisdictions in, in any fiscal manner. Special districts and school districts would not be required to participate, would have the ability to opt in to projects under this newly formed authority within their mutual benefit. It would not hurt downtown development districts or special districts. This provision, this provision is a revenue neutral mechanism to bond against future property tax revenue and increase property tax valuation that would not occur but for redevelopment. In order to protect this revenue commitment by counties, property, properties designated for this purpose would be subject to the following protections. Where bonded indebtedness has occurred on a property, a city may not annex the subject property or properties until the debt has been retired. And that was a, there are a couple of pointed questions that were asked by the municipal CML legal counsel on this issue to make sure that protection is placed. A city may annex and assume the debt with a commitment that no urban renewal district is formed that includes, that includes the property. A designated quote county revitalization area will need to provide at least one of the following important factors that substantially promotes the sound growth of the county, improves economic and social conditions, and furthers, furthers the health, safety, and well-being of the public. And these are the one, you only have to have one. You don't have to have all four. They would have one either necessary, necessary investment in critical infrastructure to deceive, to, to achieve desired level of residential density and employment growth, or two, development of affordable housing, three, expansion of access to healthy food systems, community medical services, public parks, or public educational communities, four, improvement of circulation patterns and enhancement of safe and liable public transportations as they're according to established standards, and seven, clearance abatement or rehabilit, rehabilitation of structurally unsound deteriorating or otherwise unsafe structures, or eight, redevelopment of former landfills, floodplains, or other areas challenged by topography than in, in, that are challenged by topography that in present condition pose a threat to public health and safety. They only have to, to, to do one of those. So that bill, again, is, is really creating, not creating, but it certainly municipalities and obviously the Adams County is the main, main, main proponent of this bill. A lot of people ask, why don't they wait until next year to do something? But they apparently have a couple of areas in Adams County where they feel like they need to move on it before this session ends. The one that Senator Hendrickson and, and Senator Cleve Simpson asked me to bring to your attention, would ask for your support. A lot of municipalities, including Grand Junction, Mesa County, Westminster, and a number of the counties in, on the northern tier of Denver are really concerned about what they call uneven enforcement of water quality by the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, CDPH. So this bill, which is House Bill 1221, which we'll send out to you and put on your bill tracker. This bill would require the Division of Administration, Department of Public Health and Environment, to use quality assured data to determine the maximum amount of pollutant that can be discharged daily into state waters without exceeding applicable water standards. It's basically a very bill, two-page bill, but what communities like Westminster and other municipalities are saying is that CDPH comes in and they'll monitor a contaminant and say, we think this one violates the quality standards. And then for this, another municipality, they'll use a different standard. So Senator Hendrick signed on to this bill, Senator Cleve Simpson signed on this bill, and they think it's at least provides some level of continuity. And I don't know if the City of Pueblo has had this issue, whether it's mainly a Pueblo County issue, but they asked me to, to bring it to your attention so that you could take a look at it and potentially support if, if you, if you chose to. Happy to take any questions. I know we're, you know, only 15 minutes on the calendar, and I know you guys have a busy schedule.
Great. Yeah. Thank you so much, Gil, Ryan, and Alec for that update. What, so there was, the one that you just covered was House Bill 1221. What was the, does the county revitalization bill, because it has not been introduced, there's no number yet? Is that correct?
Yeah, no number on that bill yet. We also wanted to give you an update on the, the enforcement, Ryan, the bill that President Graham had asked about. I know that.
Yeah, House Bill, House Bill 1169, limit arrests for low-level offenses. This is one of the bills that was pushed back last week, not only because of the crazy schedule, but the sponsor of the bill, Representative Bacon, is still having some stakeholder meetings on this. It, she's getting a lot of pushback. So she elected to, to delay it until it's, it's now scheduled for March 21st at 1:30. And, and we will send a follow-up document. We didn't know how best to do it tonight. But we'll send a follow-up doc, document with all the bills that we discussed. And, and we have like five or six others on there that we just wanted to get in front of you. And we put a short summary, and if, if the city council would like to take a position, we, we'd, we'd welcome any feedback that you have, but we'll send you that document. It's a little bit easier to read than, than going through the bill tracker and having to find these bills for yourself. So we'll send that, we'll send that after this meeting.
And just a quick, and so the, the county revitalization authority bill, as soon as that gets a number, it sounded like they were going to do one more stakeholder meeting before they introduce the bill. But as soon as that one has a number, we'll send that out to you. Just a quick check. I don't know if any of city council or the mayor's office have tried to use the, the tracker, or if, if you can give us some feedback, if you're having some difficulty with that, let us know so that we can, we can make sure that, you know, we need to come down and make sure that it's working properly so that you're able to access the bills. If you're able to send us comments on the bills, I hope you have all of our contact information. I know this is our first opportunity to, you know, to present the work session. So as we move along, if there are some things that you'd like to see differently during our 15-minute, 15-minute presentation, please let us know.
Great. What questions are there from council? Counselor?
Hi, Mr. Romero. So it looks like Senate, I'm not Senate, but the Bill 1202 passed through the House on Saturday. I was wondering, you know, there are almost all of county leadership and parts of city leadership that are really concerned about the safe injection sites. And so I was wondering, and then also a lot of the citizens I've been hearing from, I was wondering what type of stance you took when you were lobbying on that particular issue.
So we're gathering information. I, one thing that we need from the city, if, if you would take an official position on that, that allows us to, and we're required to, to place that on the Secretary of State's official site, indicating your position on the bill. I've indicated to our delegation, Polo County has already taken the position of oppose on that bill. If you take a position opposed, we'll communicate that to our delegation. Now we'll start to lobby the committees. This bill is moving pretty quickly through the House, and there's some sense that our best chance to try to get this killed will probably occur in the Senate, but I'm glad you asked that question because I'm meeting with the governor's staff Thursday or Friday. I'm still trying to get a date because we, we're, it's our understanding that unless there are significant changes to it, even though this is a May, this bill says a municipality may authorize these, is that the governor may veto this bill. So we're trying to get some, it would be nice to be able to go walk into the governor's office and, and tell him that at least on the, for Southern Colorado, the city and the county both oppose this bill. So if you take an official position, that we can do that. But right now, you know, our, you know, the, the only entity that's done that is the county at this point.
All right. Thank you. We'll let you know.
Okay.
For Flores.
Gil, thank you. Great. This is, this is something that Pueblo hasn't had in a while, is this type of report on a, on a meeting basis. And so I'm really excited about a relationship going forward. I, I just think it's going to be so beneficial to a city. I am concerned about the, the air quality bill, and so is Averas Steel, you know, as they're building the plant. Because nobody seems to know what's in it, or what, you know, what is going to come of it. But I think I heard you say that it still has not been introduced, or where are we at with that on the, on the air quality? But I can't remember the, the bill number, but.
It's, it hasn't been introduced. It was supposed to be introduced, it was, it was anticipated that it would be introduced in the next two weeks. They're still going to do a little bit more stakeholder process, process on this one. But the one thing that I wanted to indicate to council, and Councilman Flores, is that we're, we're both trying to meet with Representative Bacon on that bill and, and the bill that, that Ryan talked to you about on the, always forget, what's the number on that one?
1169.
So 1159. So Babe, Representative Bacon is the sponsor of that bill, and she's going to be the sponsor, sponsor of the air quality bill. We're trying to get some time on her calendar so we can talk to, to her about both of those bills. It's a little bit more difficult to talk to her about the air quality bill until we get, you know, at least a fact sheet. You know, we saw some of the basic things. I, we can send that out to you on some of the things that they were, you know, they're, they're considering in terms of, of that. We also met with the Speaker of the House last Thursday. Even though the Speaker obviously is not the sponsor of this bill, but also to discuss with her the concerns we have for Southern Colorado on that bill. But we, we hope that we will see that bill in the next week or week and a half. But that'll be, that will be the most significant air quality bill this session, and it will be the most lobbied bill this session. So as soon as, you know, you can do a turnaround to take a look at that bill, impact on business community, and get back to us that we can communicate with both our delegation, our Southern Colorado delegation, your position, and then we can start lobbying that bill and committee on behalf of the City of Pueblo.
They, they do have Averas's attention, big attention at this stage. And so it's going to be important that we, we stay connected and you communicate on that with us.
Yeah, we'll get you the, as much information as we can get in terms of those that are supporting the bill, opposing the bill, fact sheets, all of those kinds of things. We know this is a big, a big issue in, in Southern Colorado.
Thank you, Gil.
Other questions for the Romero team? Seeing none. Thank you. We will keep an eye out on the one pager that your office will send about the bills that were discussed today. If you could send that to Tracy, that would be great, and we will let you know.
Okay. And if you have any trouble accessing the bill tracker, please let us know. And, and if there are things that you want presented differently for the, our presentations for the working session, please give us your feedback. Thank you.
Sounds great. Yeah, I, I think what we'll do moving forward is have the lobbying committee maybe recommend a process by which we can move forward, where, you know, how we're going to vote on taking a stand and what that process will look like. So thank, thank you, Gil, Ryan, and Alec. Counselor Flores.
Did I miss something? Do we have a lobbied committee?
It was in the retreat. It's Counselor Tensio and Counselor Graham.
Okay, I must have missed that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And that's, and that's a great idea, by the way. If, if we could prioritize, because we only have 15 minutes with, with, you know, some little bit of planning, we'll try to use all 15 minutes more effectively in terms of prioritizing the bills that you want to hear and maybe take positions on.
You know what, Gil? I did have a question about the 1221, kind of unifying the CDPH regulations. Is that going to affect local health departments at all?
Yes.
Only CDPH?
Yeah, yeah, it does. And that's why, like cities like Westminster, Commerce City, a number of these cities, you know, actually weren't, this bill really was brought forward by Grand Junction and Mesa County. But there, you know, when Senator Hendrickson heard about it, and so Senator Cleve Simpson, they both said, you know, this really has impact to a number of cities in terms of discharge into state water sources. And so, and I, I don't know, Pueblo's had that concern, but there have been a lot of, there's been a lot of criticism of CDPH, CDPH in terms of, in this affects businesses, their permitting process, just the uneven application of, of, of water standards and air standards. So, yeah, it's, you know, take a look at the bill and, and, and I'll, I'll let Senator Hendrickson know that I, I discussed it with, with council.
Counselor Winter.
Yeah, I have a question about that. Does this have anything to do with pollutant trading of water? Is that, is that on, is that an issue on this bill?
No, it, what it's really more, more focused on, Counselor Winter, is they're really looking at data. They want to make sure that the data is, you know, is applied evenly. So, you know, they look at both the federal and state guidance on water quality data collection, best practices, reliable analytical methods and data quality assurances. They just feel like it's a very subjective standard at times. So it should be a very objective standard, and, and then it's applied unevenly across the state. So we sent that out. You should, you should, you know, it's a, so a four-page bill. If you can take a look at us, if you have any questions about it, let us know, and we'll get you more information.
All right, thanks.
Okay.
Great. Thank you, Romero team.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right. On our agenda then, our city updates. Ms. Solano, please take it away.
Thank you, Madam Chair, City Council and Mayor Gradisar. In a, in a previous state agency where I worked, the bill tracker was exported to an Excel spreadsheet by House Bill and Senate Bill numbers and tracked separately in an Excel spreadsheet that would allow for all of you to have access to it daily and weekly. And maybe I can talk with the mayor and see if Laura, Haley, Tracy, or Alyssa can, can run that function for you. And then it's a printout that you could bring with you every, every Monday, and it'll have the, it'll have the tracker basically in a spreadsheet. I have another update, however. The COVID update numbers for the one-week count are 64.9, and the positivity rate is 8%, but improving in the hospital. We're on now 10 days with stabilized COVID patients. We're back up to 10, and we were down to about seven. There's an important City of Pueblo warning, warns the public about a scam call. It went out earlier today. And on behalf of Chief Huber, I'm just going to read to you a couple of different paragraphs. It's, it's important for the recording and for those watching and watching on Facebook that the City of Pueblo and Pueblo Fire Department have made, have been made aware of an ongoing scam related to public interaction with the Pueblo Fire Department. There is a fake solicitation asking citizens to join a Pueblo Fire Department support group with a one-time registration fee. There is, this is not a real request from the fire department. It should be recognized as scam, and no one should register and pay a fee. The Pueblo Fire Department will never ask citizens for a registration fee or payment of any kind, said Chief of Pueblo Fire Department Barb Huber. Our, our services are paid for by the taxpayers. If we ever do some kind of fundraising, it will be communicated, communicated explicitly, something like the Fill the Boot campaign. So that with that awareness, be very cautious and not to agree out there to any payment of a registration fee in support of the Pueblo Fire Department. Moving on, I have a couple of other updates. I forwarded to you electronically today. The ARPA report balances as of February 28th, and I also printed hard copies for you. Included in the electronic email was also the link to the SharePoint, which would allow you access to 100% of the submissions. But if you haven't been in that SharePoint for a while, I had to get myself back in there today. So give me a call, or I included Julia Cordova's email in there. And then also the City Council Budget Committee, we can be reviewing in the monthly committee meeting, any additional ARPA requests that you find on SharePoint you have questions about. And there is no ARPA $1 million team-up to clean up trash report today. As next Monday evening in City Council, there is a public hearing regarding people experiencing homelessness. And on that agenda is the Parks and Rec trash cleanup, and, and the coordinator will be here to just give an update. And that does conclude the city updates this evening. If you have any questions or directions for me.
Thank you, Ms. Solano. What questions are there from council? Counselor Graham?
Thank you. Thank you for the update for the ARPA and allowing us to be able to get onto that now. And then are we going to have Crossroads and Crazy Faith come for their proposals?
The Crossroads, the city attorney is on leave this week. The Crossroads will, I think he said it'll be on the 27th as a first reading, and Crazy Faith, I think, will be discussed in the mayor's week, internal, internal task force meeting Wednesday morning.
Yeah, I just saw it in the paper, and we've seen nothing about it. So it'd be nice if the council saw it before the newspaper.
Counselor Flores.
I have a request, and that is a $2,500 donation to HSPPR. What happened this, I guess, within the last week? They found a person that had 30 dogs in his house or her, they didn't say. But it was really, I guess, a bad, bad situation. And when we were involved in putting together, you know, the, the animal shelter contract, the, the one before now, there was a group that wanted a 9, 90% save rate. And this is a good example of how you cannot set a certain amount, because you just never know when somebody has 30 cats or 30 dogs or whatever. But in this particular case, it's going to cost around 200, an average of $250 per animal to get, get them cleaned up, get shots given to them, along with putting a chip in them, and then also transporting them throughout the state of Colorado. Because they're, they're going to be giving these out to various other animal shelters. And so I thought that out of the council contingencies, we could give $2,500 to help them out. At, at, there's some dogs that'll take 300 because they're bigger, and some that are smaller. So I averaged it out to 250, but I figured this amount that we would donate would at least take care of 10 dogs. And I guess it was a, a real ugly situation, but I'd just like to do that at our, at our appropriate time, go through the, through a resolution, put that on our agenda.
Thank you, Counselor Flores, and I'll send the email message this evening to Tracy and Alyssa and ask for that.
Thanks a lot.
Counselor Maestri, and then Counselor Graham.
Is there an update on the mill, on the sale of the mill? Will it be here at the end of the first quarter? Has there been a sale that they haven't made public yet?
Mayor, will you help me?
As far as I know, they're still in negotiations and still vetting respective purchasers. So there hasn't been any sale as far as I know.
Will we be, I'd like to be, for council to be updated as soon as they make that purchase and see where, if it's, I heard some of the negotiations are stating that there's, it's possibly good, not going to be a union. They're not going to accept the unionization. And so we would like to know so the community knows, because a lot of people don't read the newspaper.
Counselor Graham.
I just wanted to ask for one more work session, too. If we could get an update on the 3.5 million for the capital improvements for the firehouses, since we're about a quarter of the way through the year. So we can kind of see what that looks like and how that money's been spent. So we can kinda see what that looks like and how that money's been spent.
Uh, thank you, President Graham. And there were a couple of other updates requested initially in the, um, in the City Council Work Retreat that where we pulled as the agenda was modified, that we can go back and I can ask Counselor Martinez to which ones that we can schedule work sessions for. And that absolutely was one of them.
Yeah, um, we did have to, um, actually cut out several department directors. Um, and fire was one talking about the, the new, um, yeah. So I can actually work with Chief of Staff Solano sometime probably in the next week to get all of those missed ones, uh, scheduled. Counselor Atencio?
Yeah, Lori, you brought up the, uh, the cleanup crew. Uh, I got a phone call today and I was gonna call and just skip my mind, but since we're talking about it, there's an area behind the, uh, Solar Garden on the east side that needs to be cleaned up. Would you let them know?
Thank you, Counselor Martinez. I'll send that email right now as well. I'm sorry. Thank you, Counselor Atencio.
Counselor Warner?
Oh, thank you. Um, I just wanted to comment, uh, about, uh, Vincente's request to, um, bring about a raise for City Council. Uh, I think he mentioned fourteen-hundred dollars, uh, for any new council members coming on. Um, just because he mentioned that the dynamic was either rich people or retirees or, or both. Um, I agree that is the dynamic, but fourteen-hundred dollars is not gonna change your dynamics at all. You're still gonna have rich people, retirees and retired rich people. So, um, I don't know, Vincente, if you wanna give me a call, I have some, some other ideas. I'd appreciate that.
Will do. Thanks for your input.
And, uh, Ms. Solano, for the SharePoint link, we just email you for it. For the ARPA?
Uh, you can email me and/or, uh, Julia, and Julia's probably more familiar. She's in there regularly.
Okay.
And her email address and telephone number are in the email I sent you today.
Okay. Great. Moving right along on our agenda, we're already behind schedule. So our friends from Action Twenty-two, um, are next on our agenda. Can I have Ms. Blackhurst to the podium, please? And then if you could introduce yourself for the record, that'd be great.
Brian McCain, CEO of Action Twenty-two.
I'm Sarah Blackhurst. I'm the CEO of Action Twenty-two. Thank you for having us this evening. Um, we wanted to just, uh, very quickly tell you a little bit about Action Twenty-two. I know that you are all familiar, but, um, wanted to update you on what we're doing. And then Brian's gonna update you on the, uh, academy that you've been hearing so much about that we launched, uh, back in January. Um, so as you already know, Action Twenty-two is a, uh, serves twenty-two counties in Southern Colorado as a public policy chamber of commerce. We work on, um, issues, um, that range from, um, local government affairs, uh, rural economic development, healthcare, education and, um, natural resources, which means that we spend a lot of our time on ag and water, um, within those. Um, we do, uh, our membership is made up of, um, local governments, nonprofit organizations, uh, a lot of individuals, people running for office will often join Action Twenty-two, um, entrepreneurs. So we have a wide, uh, variety of, um, of, uh, membership. And we do that, uh, mainly because we are very passionately nonpartisan. We have to really focus strongly on issues. Um, right now, we spend, uh, the majority of our time working on, uh, the, during the session, working on issues that affect, um, or legislation that's been introduced that specifically affect our region. Uh, our process is really simple. And I heard, um, you speak a little bit about the process for coming to a position. So what we do before the session every year is that we make sure that our membership lets us know what their priorities are. Uh, we operate asking two questions. What matters most to those we serve and what does our community need from us? And so, um, we have a list of priorities, um, and during the session, um, our lobbyist who is, uh, our lobbyist pro bono is, uh, a gentleman by the name of Mike Beasley. Mr. Beasley keeps track of bills that would fall under that priority list for us and they're in monitor. Um, during that, during the session, we have members of our, uh, any of the Action Twenty-two members can bring uh, a little piece of legislation to the board and the board will take position on that policy. We do that, um, by, they get to vote. So we, we discuss and we give them an opportunity. Um, that's our process. You have to come up with whatever process works best for you. We aren't under the same obligations, uh, as, um, because we're a C-six as you are as a local government. Um, but that has worked very effectively for us. The reason that we streamlined that is because during the session, um, especially when things are getting pushed off to the very end or to the downhill side of the session, um, we have to be able to react very quickly. We have to be able to mobilize very quickly. So, uh, we've created our processes that we can do that. Um, so I just thought I'd give you a really quick rundown of the bills, um, that are in front of our board right now. Um, for, uh, what we, what they're, um, considering right now. Um, HB twelve fifteen is limits on hospital facility fees. Um, we've got a few, um, a few discussions more to have on this. Uh, twelve oh-two, the overdose prevention center authorization, um, Action Twenty-two is opposed to this one. Um, ten fifty-seven, which is amenities for all genders in public buildings, that's still under discussion. Um, zero one, uh, six, that's Senate bill. Zero one six, that's the greenhouse gas emission reduction measures. This was introduced early on in the session and it's separate from what, um, Gil Romero was talking about earlier. The bill that he's talking about would be added on to this bill, um, which is a, a bit of a, a monster in and of itself. Um, the establishment of wildlife resiliency code board. This is Senate Bill one sixty-six. That is the one that is the fire mitigation. Um, Bill, it's a, it's wooey. Um, we are in discussion. It's, we're gonna, um, are my board's gonna move to amend on this. Um, we really don't like this bill and it's been, um, a big discussion because it is a, um, it takes away your ability and county's ability to make decisions. It's like thirteen sixty-two from last year. It's a preemptive land use issue, um, and we're concerned about that. But, um, unlike most of the bills that we've seen in this session and previous session, there has been a very robust stakeholder, uh, process on this. They've been working on this for a year. So we, instead of outright, um, going up against it, we're looking at the amendments on it. Um, uh, eleven oh-one is the ozone, uh, season transit program flexibility. This is the bill that, um, they snuck in, uh, an amendment at the very last second. CDOT snuck in amendment at the very last second. And it would effectively change how, um, CDOT serves rural communities. And we're very concerned about this. A gig transparency, great, uh, gig work transparency concerning, um, for drivers who connect with consumers through the use of digital platforms. So this is a bill about, um, Ubers and, um, DoorDash kind of things. Um, and then the last one was, um, that we've, that, uh, we're still discussing is one sixty-nine and that's a minimum age to, to, um, produce firearms. So those are what we're working on right this second. Um, and there's a lot of discussion back and forth between our board on what we should do. And we work really closely with our lobbyist on whether we should, uh, and we give three options. Um, support, oppose, um, amend or needs more discussion. And so we wanna make sure that we're doing a good job representing our membership on this and how that impact is. So we have, uh, a metrics for which we decide, um, how we're gonna vote on a bill so that everybody understands that, um, what is best served is the interest of our members and what their, our community needs from us. So that's how our process goes, um, through all of that. So I'm gonna turn it over to Brian so he can talk about the academy and then you guys just ask us any questions you have.
And it's, excuse me, coming off a cold. Um, it's also important to add that Pueblo City is a member of Action Twenty-two. So you are all members of Action Twenty-two. Um, so I get to do the fun part of Action Twenty-two on the C-three side. Uh, we have what's called the Action Twenty-two Foundation Leadership Policy and Governance Academy. And we just started it this year. Um, January is our, our first block. It's a seven-month program. Um, the, basically, it's a professional fellowship with the purpose of elevating regional leadership, thoughtful public policy and the integrity of governance for Colorado's rural communities, of which Pueblo is a part. The objective is strengthening not only our collective voice, but overall, overall our effectiveness in public service. So we kinda break it down and, and I've worked, I mean, I've been in front of city councils and with many different hats on over almost twenty years now. But, um, basically the, the knowledge and the work that I've done and other people that are in my position or similar positions, we wanted to educate our community leaders, upcoming leaders, influential people. It could be business leaders, anybody that, that wears the hat of a leader in the community on basically how to positively and effectively impact the government in Colorado as it affects local government. So i- if you look at, we, I hate to say this, but it's, if you look at Denver versus the rest of the state, you know, if you're on city council in Denver or county commissioner in Denver and, or those areas, you have so many tools when you go and you have of this huge staff. Um, a lot of them have, uh, almost like a boot camp that last weeks that they know how to go to the Capitol, which they just walk, you know, three blocks up the street and they, they could talk and interact with our legislators. Down here, we don't have that opportunity. Um, Pueblo's a little better off than some of our, our southern and southeastern communities. But same time, Denver's far away and it's tough for us to get up here, especially if you're on city council or county commissioner. I mean, you're busy. It's a part-time job, but you are very busy. So how to effectively use your voice? And we broke it down to basically explain in detail the Colorado legislative process, how a bill's written, um, from beginning to end, how to impact that, how to write your own bill. We're having our academy, actually the students, write a bill, um, based on their position in their communities. And this covers the twenty-two counties and with the hope snuck on wood that, you know, we will get those bills introduced the next session. Um, next we have the local government section of it, which we actually had two weeks ago. And it was featured here in Pueblo County because Pueblo County has a dynamic system of government where we have every level of a local government from special districts up to the county. And that was a two-day, just all these rural counties coming in and we have a handful of Pueblo people to understand fully how local government works, how it's funded, et cetera, et cetera. Um, the next one we're gonna do is nonprofit admin and organizational leadership. So we're bringing in the heads of many nonprofits just to kinda successfully teach their techniques to nonprofits and how they run and manage a nonprofit. And then we have the leadership component. And then the big one is gonna be Colorado fiscal policies. So one thing that, um, we find, and I don't wanna say lacking, but, um, a lot of our communities down here and leaders do not understand Colorado fiscal policy and how it works and how to access funding, for instance. Whereas again, if you go to some of our neighbors up north, they know it in and out. And that's why they see a lot of the funding. So we need, we need to give this knowledge to our leaders locally, like how to access that funding, how to be a part of the funding when the, the state budget's written. Um, then we're gonna throw in federal legislative policy. That's kinda my background. And we're gonna understand how the government works from a federal level. Um, then ballot initiatives, we're gonna go through the ballot initiative process and fully explain what is a ballot initiative, how it's used and why Colorado is different from other states and why we have so many ballot initiatives here in Colorado. Um, and finally, I, I call it the, the fun session because obviously, um, there's gonna be some hot topics at the Colorado Legislature. And the students will pick the final block of instruction to focus on those, um, those topics. Along with that, everybody that goes through is picking a community project that they will work on or have been working on and will continue to work on to betters their communities. So again, we have, I think, six people from Pueblo going through this, um, from a very diverse background. And they're bringing this team, our, our cohorts, about twenty-four people right now. And they're all gonna work on these projects together throughout the Southern Colorado communities to basically better our communities. And, um, what I would like to see, this is our, our pilot episode or our pilot year. Um, the next one starts in January and I would love to see some people from the, the Pueblo City government, whether it's the council or, you know, the mayor's office, go through this because we're teaching so much and it's just more tools that we can use to make sure our communities thrive and have access to these resources that, as you know, we kinda, we get left behind compared to, again, our big brother up north. So, um, with that, um, any questions for us from either side?
Yeah, great. Thank you, Mr. McCain and Ms. Blackhurst. What questions are there from counsel? Counselor Mastry?
Is, I'm sorry, I missed the fee. What is the fee to the program?
So, um, the fee is fifty-five-hundred. And the reason why we are charging for it, um, it is worth three or six undergrad credit hours at CSU Pueblo or six graduate credit hours at CSU Pueblo towards a masters of public administration. So, um, there's that. But we do not want money to stand in the way of somebody going through this. So there are scholarships that we go after. Our fellows right now are fundraising because not everybody has money. And again, we don't wanna make that an obstacle. So part of being a great leader is asking for money. So, and them chasing their own membership, they're going to be asking for money for sponsorship for that.
And that's fifty-five-hundred per person?
Per person.
What are the hours that you're running the academy?
So it is two full days a month, um, split up to, into seven months. There's going to be some opportunity outside of that, but we are requiring, requiring then everybody show up for those two days or zoom in. We do some remote, but it's hard to give a tour of the state Capitol or do a Zoom meeting, you know, at the, the Capitol building sometimes. So, um, two a month. And then in addition to that, I'm doing about two or three days a month for extra work with them.
And is that, um, all week, during the week, Monday through Friday?
It's when, whenever it's available. We, um, right now, our blocks are going to, are on Thursday and Fridays. But we have a lot of county commissioners, mayors and city council from the region. So as you know, schedules don't really work. So it's kinda like, get together and be like, hey, Thursday and Friday works for the majority. What works for you? Wednesday next week, we'll do that, you know? We, we make it up as we go based on schedules.
Okay. Are, where are they coming? Are the funds coming from the, out of their own pockets? Are they getting funded maybe through their contingent, um, their council contingencies?
Um, all of the above. So we have some that are funding out of their pocket or partially funding out of their pocket. We have others from, say, Black Hills Energy where it's part of their professional development fund. We have counties and cities that are paying for it out of their professional development fund or education fund for city council members. Or, um, we have a mayor going through it that's using that.
Okay, um, thank you for that.
The City of La Junta has both their mayor and one of their city council people, um, in that this time. And then they have, um, urban renewal. Um, they have somebody from urban renewal coming, going through it as well. So, um, yeah, it, they saw that they desperately needed, um, this kind of training for their folks.
Yeah, and, and back to, um, the bills that you were talking about, what's going on at legislation?
Mm-hmm.
Could you tell me where we, uh, where we stand? Explain to this, to us where twelve oh-two stands right now. How, I mean, we know it's passed through the House, but what does it mean? What, what, what does this mean?
So that means that it's gonna go up to the Senate now. Um, and so the Senate will debate it. And there'll probably be some amendments to twelve oh-two and that is the, um, I don't remember the name of it, but it's this, it's for the safe injection sites. It would authorize municipalities, um, to have safe injection sites. Um, we're really very interested to see, uh, what, um, what the Senate has to do with that and, um, or what, they'll have their fingerprints on it and then it'll go back to the House and then it'll go on from there. Um, it would be sent up to the governor after that. So the, our board is, is opposed to this. Um, and there's several reasons why, but it's probably not the reasons you think. Um, this, currently this is not, uh, it's not legal, but there are, there's one in Denver. Um, the, they're looking at a lot of other states to see what the impact is. The concern that our board had, um, in particular is that there's not a lot of provisos on this. So there's already, um, meaning there's not a lot of oversight. So the, the problem that you're gonna see is, um, who's liable for this? So if a local government authorizes that, are they gonna assume the liability for that? And I think that the, as we've looked at that, we've wondered, we've had the question, why is the state, you know, approaching it like this? Or why is the legislation approaching it like this? Because, um, whether a community, um, agrees to do this or not, there's gonna be a big chunk of that that's, there's gonna need to be some oversight. And other things, other similar, um, projects, um, the statute already, uh, there's no, there's no accountability. There's no oversight by the local health department. What we would encourage and, and we, we fully think that, um, even though we're opposed to this, that it would pass. It's a lot to put on our local municipalities, especially these smaller ones that don't have the kind of resources that Denver has. Um, there would have to be, um, so much that's done with that. So what we would encourage and, and the role that we will play if this does pass is to really push a very robust stakeholder process and that for our communities, um, for our municipalities, that they make sure that they're understanding from every perspective what it means, um, to do this. um, for our municipalities, that they make sure that they're understanding from every perspective what it means um to do this and um that they get the full input input of their communities and and not just um, and and I hate to say this, but not to make a political decision. Because polit- the political fallout for this either way is going to be tremendous. And so we're hoping to take that out of that discussion. Um, and we would help our communities take that out of that discussion and make the best possible decision for their communities on this one. So this is why it's, I think it's a lot to put on municipalities. I think it's 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 a little bit scary.
Well, I noticed that they even um didn't um consider the amendment to, an amendment to um not have them located within two thousand feet of a school, um, a hospital, a nursing home, a daycare um over the weekend. I mean, they offered up kind some sort of amend amended and they would not even consider it.
So this is part of the Colorado legislative process. And sometimes um what we'll see is um you might see a push to get it out of the House so that then the Senate can put their fingerprints on it. Don't forget that the Senate is, I mean, the House right now is veto proof. The Senate is one seat short of being veto proof. So um in the past, we've even encouraged a bill to get out of the House and go up to the Senate so that the amendments that make sense um can happen. So that's why um it's not a horrible thing that it has gone up. And hopefully, some of the amendments that would take um some of that liability out or whatever that needs to be done could happen. Um, and so, but as as of right now, Action Twenty Two is opposed. We're not in amend position because we haven't seen any amendments that we like.
Mm hmm. Thank you, Ms. Blackhurst.
Any other questions? I really like the four categories and I just want to make sure that I'm understanding them correctly for your um, the your board to decide about bills. So it's support, oppose, amend, need more, needs more discussion.
Yes, so the reason that we do that again is there, there's a lot of strategy. And as you work with, as you work with Gil moving forward, you're going to see, see a lot of that. Um, a lot happens up there that uh that, you know, some decisions have to be made uh on kind of on the fly, to tell you the truth. So there has to be a tremendous amount of trust when you have a lobbyist, that they have your best interest at heart. But you have to be able to have some space to discuss a little bit further, especially if um you oppose this in the morning, but then there's an amendment that's introduced that makes it palatable. So you have to have that um, you have to have that leeway. So when you're putting together your process for to take a position on that, um, I would encourage you to keep that amend or further discussion in that and that you can come back and revisit that.
Great, and then I'm just curious, the last question, um, what does Action Twenty Two have a stance on the House Bill twelve twenty one bill that?
So um, this is, this is an interesting one. Um, and just like um Gil said, the standards for water quality. So um, this has been a difficult thing for a very long time. And um, we, we have a ton of faith in um Senator Simpson. Cleve Simpson is one of, I think, um, in my opinion, is one of our better legislators. Um, and he's one of the few genuine water experts up there. The struggle that that you see is that um CDPHD doesn't have a standard. And their stand, if they do have a standard, they're, they have a a big turnover. Um, it's something that's been complained about a lot. So if you're calling up and you have a question, if your water department has a question on something, you don't know who you're going to get, you don't know who's going to answer the question. And they might tell you one thing and you go through and you do all of those things and that you go back and they've changed or they've made a decision, they've done something else. Um, and then it's um, it's almost a competition between CDPHD and um the EPA to see who can do a a more, a a more better job. And so what happens is you see um a tremendous amount of investment by a a municipality into um a water treatment plant or something like that. And then they come back and they say, oh, no, we're going to change that up. The other thing that's um very, and we, we have a lot of of smaller communities that have dealt with this where they say, oh, no, it needs to be something else. We've just invested seven million dollars into this and now you're saying it's going to be thirteen million? We don't have the resources to do that. Okay, well, you don't have the resources, we're still going to fine you or we're still going to do that. So this would be very, very helpful um for that. Um, we also know why sometimes the decision is made if you have like um, if you have a a small, a small government or or a um, a special district, for example, then um they don't have the resources. They're hesitant to get into that because there's no way that they'd ever be able to come to code on something. So um, I would have, I I haven't put this to my board yet, but we would, I I anticipate that um my board, knowing who they are and having been down a a very um turbulent path in the past, would um absolutely support this.
Yeah, great, good to know. Okay, seeing no other than questions or comments, thank you, Action Twenty Two for that update and um for some guidance too about the lobby. So thank you. Moving right along on our agenda, then I know that we're behind schedule. So can I please have uh Ms. Solano from Southern Colorado Harm Reduction Association to the podium, please?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Council Members, Mayor and City Staff. Thank you for this opportunity to share. My name is Jude Solano and I am the co-founder and CEO of Southern Colorado Harm Reduction. So the purpose of my coming here tonight is to sort of fill in the gaps of um some questions that are asked about our future community wellness center at two nineteen West Northern. I think I've I've run through quite a bit of this before. So if there are any questions about our history, who we are, I'd be happy to share. These are some of the programs that we're participating in. I just gave you this flyer. I want to focus mostly on the building and the layout of the plan. And this, these are after shots. So this community center, you know, this building was built in eighteen ninety nine. It's a historic building. And um apparently, the previous owners were getting ready to open a nightclub of sorts. There was, there were bars, there were um electricity for dance floors, things like that. And um, as we all know, that are familiar familiar with Besmer, this is the last thing we need in this community. This is the second floor. So this is the layout, my apologies that it's so small. Um, there are, there are spaces in this facility that are broken up into sections. So on the first floor, on the bottom left, you will see that this is the welcome center. So this is the area for um that is going to be um surrounded with artworks and the opportunity for people to come to financial literacy talks. Um, native indigenous speakers for our history because this is also one of the things that I hope to accomplish before I leave this earth is to re-educate our folks, no matter what background they come from. You know, this, this community, I'm a steel mill baby. And this neighborhood used to be filled with very, with many ethnic backgrounds. And it was like the thriving neighborhood that it was, like Union Avenue back in the day. I remember that and that was a very long time ago. So the yellow in the bottom left is going to be the welcome lounge. There will be a coffee bar, restroom, and there will be an access elevator for people to go travel to the second floor. And then the area you see in the back, the green and the purple, that is going to be our harm reduction area. Now, I know a lot of people, there's a lot of misinformation about really what harm reduction is. And since I started this program with Mike Norenberg, um, gosh, six plus years ago, one of the things that we wanted to accomplish was not just the harm reduction piece in the philosophy, but to bring support systems to the neighborhood. You know, poverty is overwhelming in this neighborhood. Not all of these people are using drugs, they're just without resources. You know, when I hear about classes and and things for a very high fee, I would love to see our community come together and buy food and buy clothing, buy resources um for the community. This is what is needed. We live in this every day and I know it's hard to relate to, but I want to try to give you a snapshot of what that looks like. So in the back of the harm reduction area, this is where, yes, we have a syringe service program. Yes, we do overdose prevention services one day a week for four hours a week. I want you to see that flyer and look at it and when you order pizza and get it at home, how many pieces are usually in there, eight to ten, right? So there are ten pieces of pie on that flyer. One of them is the syringe service program, an overdose prevention, harm reduction. Then there's the other eight that are the rest of the pie. And even at that, when people say our name, the first thing out of their mouth is the needle exchange. That is a fraction of what we do. And I hope if I can get through to anyone here tonight, it is understanding that we are so much more and we are bringing these resources to this community. So in the back, because we have a lot of homeless folks in our community and homeless doesn't always mean people just sleeping on the streets. You know, we have young mothers coming in whose water is turned off. There are going to be free showers and free laundry services in the back of this building, a lounge space next to our peer offices for people to get enrolled in programs and services. That's the point. We want people to come in, be safe, hang out, get their needs met, their basic human needs. Maslow's hierarchy, right? Food, shelter, those are the targets for us. And then toward the front, which is a dream at this moment, but we want to bring a grocery store. We want to find a qualified grocer for this neighborhood. They pe- they shop at the dollar store, that's unacceptable, you know? Physical health is connected to our nutrition and we want people healthy and well. We need to be able to have access in this neighborhood. Then the diagram on the right is the second floor. And there is going to be limited access. Security is a really big deal. Security is a big deal where we are now in our little tiny twenty two hundred square foot office building. So when you walk into our center, and I would love to see more of you come and visit us just for an hour. Come and spend time with us. See all the rules on our door before you walk into our space. You cannot come in there threatening behavior, you cannot come in there with weapons. You cannot come in there and think that you're going to buy or sell drugs in the front of our store. It's not happening. And so people know that or they lose their privilege to utilize our services. So upstairs is going to be an entire healthcare wing. The back, the upper area in green that you're seeing is an area that we already are working with healthcare providers. We have an urgent care pop-up clinic that comes on Mondays and Wednesdays, that is care on location. We have a medication assisted treatment provider. Those are for people wanting to get off of opioids. And that is Front Range Clinic currently. And we are also developing a new partnership with Boulder Clinic. Those services plus Servicios de la Rosa, in fact, there's a representative sitting here supporting us tonight from Servicios. This is the point, SCARA doesn't want to do everything. We want to bring in all the professionals, the best of the best, to bring all of those services to the people. When you do that, they utilize them. It was a theory before for me. As a registered nurse working on my master's degree, I saw unstudied countries like Portugal, the Netherlands, Sweden, Canada. And I asked that question, is this possible here? Why is our problem so bad? And it is possible. I want you to look at this group right back here. That's my board and my staff. And there are people sitting right there, you can't pick them out. But they are people that you're talking about. They are the lost ones that are on the streets, they work, the lost ones. This is possible. And this is our goal. It is not this misinformation about overdose prevention centers, by the way, that's the correct name. They, they are not injection sites with just a bunch of random people serving those folks. That's not what that point is. That's another conversation for another dad, be happy to come and talk about that. It's irrelevant because that is not what we are doing. So I ask you, this takes a lot of courage, folks. I I want to talk about the healthcare wing, I'm getting off track, sorry, my apologies. There is also going to be a methadone clinic on this site. They've committed Elevate Methadone Clinic is going to be in this site right here, right in the center of Besmer, where people are struggling. They can come into our space, sign in through security, make an appointment and be seen by healthcare. You know, addiction is the only chronic health condition in the world that we arrest. We don't arrest people for eating cake that are diabetics, do we? But we arrest people who use drugs. Something wrong with that. Then in the front, there's the blue section, that will be the staff area. And there is going to be actual space because I want to leave room for people to come in, for different schools, alternative high schools, for Boys and Girls Club to come and have a site, a satellite site at this center, talk to Health Solutions. I've talked to all the partners that we have partnered with in the past and are currently working with, where we send people to. And they are all very interested because they know that there is no access to Besmer. People without cars and the money for a bus ticket, they don't get on that bus and go to the fancy building on the hill in Bu- in Besmer, excuse me, in Buella. Getting my neighborhoods mixed up. So that is what we're talking about here. The library district wants to provide a satellite office for people to come in and do adult learning education opportunities. I have a couple of statistics. The Brennan Center for Justice is an independent nonpartisan law and policy organization. And according to their research, one of the best ways to prevent crime is to provide more resources and support to low income communities. For policymakers, this means expanding access to substance abuse and workforce development programs to services that have become increasingly unavailable even as they grow in demand. Substance use treatment and workforce development. That is another thing that we're doing. If you see on that brochure, we are part of the Wages Program, the Second Chance Act here in the state of Colorado. That is what we do. We help people not only find jobs, but if they want to begin a career in peer specialists or even many of them want to become social workers, they've been through it. They would make great social workers to be able to help address this crisis and those that are still hurting. According to the Center for American Progress, an independent nonpartisan policy institute located in Washington DC, their research shows that communities are safer when residents have access to stable jobs, high quality schools and social services that are and clean and vibrant public spaces. Um, there are no parks in this neighborhood. There are no basketball courts. There are no opportunities for children to play that are safe. There's a little park across from Buella Elementary or from Besmer Elementary. Very small park. No soccer fields. This is where they're needed. So that's really all I came to say, I came to share. I hope this makes the picture more clear and develops that transparency because we need you. This community needs you. I came back to Pueblo, I was born and raised here. I remember walking down Northern Avenue, holding my mother's hand and going to eat after church and shopping at the Vic Baines Department Store. For those of you, they'll get that joke. Help us, it takes courage. I believe you're going to have that courage. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Solano, for that presentation. What questions are there?
Thank you, Ms. Solano, for that presentation. What questions are there?
Um, you know, I don't, I guess I do have a question, but I just want to thank Jude Solano and everybody from the Southern Colorado Harm Reduction Association on really educating us as to what harm reduction is. And I'm sure we can go into what harm reduction isn't. Uh, but thanks for giving us a small glimpse of what that is because there's definitely some ignorant people who don't know what exactly harm reduction is. So thanks for coming in here and showing that to us. And oh, just the one quick question is, do we pay for naloxone?
No. There's a, a naloxone bulk fund that the State Health Department distributes to law enforcement, to harm reduction organizations, to public health systems. Um, most of us do not pay for naloxone. We get our naloxone through that bulk fund.
So all of Pueblo pretty much does.
That distributes naloxone, correct?
Thank you.
Counselor Graham.
Thank you, Ms. Solano, for your presentation. Um, I did have a question. You are currently funded by the city and the county through CSAC. Is that correct?
We have a small grant from CSAC, yes.
And were you funded last year or this year or?
For twenty twenty-one and twenty-one twenty-two.
And you did receive funds. Your reporting was up to date for the?
Yes.
Great. Um, and then, you know, just, uh, a comment, you know, I'm, I'm completely for community centers that provide food and shelter. But I just cannot get behind a community center that provides food, shelter, methadone, needles, and having children in the same building. I think that that's just, that, that's hard for me to picture, um, with the work that you do, having those combined into one space. And so I'm not supportive of this. Thank you.
May I respond? Okay. Um, oftentimes, this is not, I, I heard this today and, and it was something I didn't even realize was a topic of discussion. There is not a childcare facility in there, in this, in this system. But let me ask you, people that are coming in, for example, our, our syringe service program operates on Thursdays. If someone comes in with a, a child and they're asking for diapers and other supports because they just see the people there using the facility, what are we supposed to share with them?
I, I mean, I would just say you have to draw the line whether you're going to be a community center or a needle exchange at that point. And then you, you did say that kids would be there for satellite learning.
The library district is adult learning education.
No kids will ever be in that building doing any type of learning?
Well, I don't know if you could say that if there is, like our LEAF program on your flyer, you see the Life Empowerment and Fulfillment Program? Currently, we go into alternative high schools and operate that program because that's where we can reach them. We also want to be able to bring kids that are on the streets heading in this direction where we do not want them coming to our syringe service program. I would love to put that part of our service out of business. I would love nothing more. I'm a healthcare professional. It's always been about wellness. But again, I would just ask for you to look at the picture of who and why and how we serve them. We are trying to create a safe space. There is none. My staff cannot even be in our building alone. There has to be a team of three at minimum. We leave at four o'clock in the afternoon because it's so dangerous right now. And I look at the students leaving school Monday through Thursday, the little kids, the elementary school just down the block. And I think you, you never see anyone walking. They're either being picked up by a car or they have a parent picking them up that doesn't have a vehicle. So where are they supposed to go? If we don't start somewhere, where are they supposed to go? That's my only question.
Other, do you have a comment for that?
Nothing more than I just think that it needs to be too separate. Those, those lines should never cross. Well, they don't give needles out on the grocery store.
Counselor Atencio?
Yeah, uh, the population that you serve, they have children. Are those children aware of the situations that they're in? Do they see addictive personalities? Do they see addictive relatives? Do they see addictive? Do they see all the problems that you're trying to deal with? So if we're trying to protect children, they're already there. What we're trying to do is keep those children from becoming addictive personalities and
Well, one of the things-
Help as many people as you can. That's all I got.
True. And if I may, um, in addition to that, by, by allowing a mother who, this just happened Thursday, literally, I have lots of stories. Um, let me kind of share that situation too. Cause I'm hearing that you think we only serve a specific population. There's an elderly Korean lady whose husband died a year ago. She does not read or, and speaks very little English. She, language barrier. She owns a home down the street. She doesn't understand how she's going to keep her house. She keeps getting things stolen from her. She spends half her day in our community, in our center now where we're at. Getting coffee, sitting with staff. We have been trying to get her through SRDA. Where would she go? If we didn't expand. She comes in and bless her heart, she hangs out on Thursdays that one day for four hours. This is one person. We have another gentleman, one of the homeless population. I don't believe he's even using, but he is. You know, again, I was a psychopath in the ER for many years, so I can say this. It is a medical term. He's a schizophrenic untreated, for sure. He comes in and eats. I don't know how he has managed to survive, but we know we can put eyes on him and keep him safe for today. We have young men and women that are coming out of incarceration. We just transferred one young gentleman who actually was working for us for a period of time. He now knows he wants to be a peer specialist. He was in prison. And now he, we, he went to Denver because there are more opportunities for him there for the kind of work that he wants to do. Where would he go? And the children, again, I hear what you're saying. I do. But I would have probably agreed with you before I walked into this work and got this calling. But that's not reality. The children come in and at least for that moment, I can lay eyes on them. I could see if they're being abused. I can see if they're hungry and struggle, struggling, excuse me. I can see that. We can see that. This team can see that. And we can offer them help.
Um, I want to be cognizant of time because it's a regular meeting tonight. Counselor Mistry and then Counselor Flores.
I agree with you, Ms. Solano, that the community needs help, especially the underprivileged community in this. Why are you? Why are you taking such a stance to help all and combine the two rather than to let something go so that you can provide for those who are in need? Um, who aren't being, you know, um, these children, um, yes, they are exposed to it all day long. I don't know that coming and seeing that, oh, we're hungry, so we've got food. Well, my mom's still a drug addict or my dad's still a drug addict. Because there's things, like you say, there's a lot of things that these children suffer when they're not with you, when you're not, you don't have your eyes on them. And, you know, if we're, we're keeping their parents, um, we're basically saying it's okay. We're keeping them alive. That's, that's the big thing behind it, harm reduction. We're helping the addict from killing themselves or getting a disease that may kill them in the future. Um, and yet, a lot of, there's a lot of people suffering around them at the moment, especially the children. Why would you not try to save your organization? And what the things you're trying to do for this community by letting that portion of your program go?
That's a great question. And what I can tell you is we're responding to the needs of the neighborhood. Would I have developed all these other outlets had it not been such a demand? Again, we need to offer healthcare. And we can't separate that from the people that need it the most, which are the active use folks that are suffering because, trust me, there are a lot of functional people that use substances that they shouldn't be using. We all know them. I know we do in full transparency. However, we're responding again to a neighborhood that is riddled with poverty, no resources. Yes, again, I wished we were University Park and there was a beautiful green belt for the kids to go out to. And I would make that choice if I had that option in Besmer, but I don't.
Yeah, but drugs don't discriminate. And so there are families all over this city who's, um, you know, who are suffering from addiction. And it's not so much just the family anymore, the friends of the addict. Right now, it's in the entire community that are suffering from addiction.
Exactly.
And so keeping people comfortable in their addiction without, um, you know, is, is what what is where it's, the community themselves are feeling the weight of it on their shoulders. You know, the average person goes to work every day to, to keep a roof over their head, to keep food on their table, to make sure that their children get a good education. And then, you know, their taxes are raised and expenses, costs are going up. They're going through the same things too. So they don't understand it and they're not sympathetic to it. And, you know, we have, this is, this, the money here in our city, um, that is spent um, has to satisfy the taxpayers also.
Agreed. But do we continue to turn a blind eye to the people? Because again, in a, in a resource like this, this is unique. And even to Colorado, even to harm reduction organizations, this particular model is unique. And I know, um, Commissioner, Councilwoman Flores told me once that, you know, I had too big of dreams for this community. I don't believe that. I don't believe that because it's getting worse and we have to offer healthcare. Where else would we be able to do that? We send people everywhere all the time. We even give them the bus pass to get there. We even call Meek and Med Ride to get them there. And they don't make it there, or they make it there one or two times, except when they come in for medication assisted treatment at our site. People are getting stabilized.
Please explain to the community what medical assisted treatment is.
So that is for, um, the treatment of opioid addiction. I'll hurry, I promise. Um, it is either Suboxone or Vivitrol for alcoholism. And so those folks, they're taking that step. So you have the folks that are in active use. Then they're coming in and they're remembering, I can go see a doctor here on Monday and Wednesday. Then I can start talking to peers. I can get into an Oxford House. I can seek services. That's all we're doing. It is not anything of ignoring one population or another. And to say that our organization by adding services that nobody wants to do is a little frightening and sad for me to hear from my city council.
Well, you know, we also have to, you know, we always have to listen to our constituents too. And we're getting a lot of pushback on funding organizations that promote, um, safe drug use.
I'm not.
Come to Besmer. Come and spend an hour with me.
I've spent a lot of time in Besmer.
No, but come and spend it with me. I'm inviting you, please. Open invitation. Anytime. I will be there.
I've been down to some of the other organizations and I've worked with the, with Celebrate Recovery. I've gone in and seen what they've had to offer through their recovery services. And I've watched them work with families and I've watched positive evenings take place as they're learning to, for the whole family to go through the recovery process and move forward.
And that's what we want to offer here.
That's, and that's what taxpayers are looking for right now. They're looking for solutions.
We're talking about the same things. So let me ask you, when you go, when you-
So let me ask you, if this, uh, safe injection site does go through, is that something that you would be willing to offer?
Oh, I don't have that expertise. I, I don't, I don't have that expertise. That's the thing. Overdose Prevention Center started in Sweden. And I do know about them. I do know how they work. There hasn't been a single overdose death. They are not a free-for-all. They're staffed with EMTs, nurses and physicians, nurse practitioners, physician assistants. That's the point. And people are, you know, the harm reduction organizations in Pueblo, we offer treatment on site. Access Point does too. We want that treatment piece to be, always be a part, an opportunity for people to participate in.
And then you also said you were wanting to be a satellite for the Boys and Girls Club, correct?
We want to be a satellite for everybody. That does, that works with-
Actually had the opportunity and the blessings to be a, a, um, part-time resident of the Nordic countries and the European Union. So I'm very well-versed in what you're talking about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Counselor Flores, we have to, we have to move on soon. Counselor Flores, no, it's okay.
Uh, I, I think you, uh, uh, I think in our meeting, uh, after you were vetted, you know, through the ARPA process, that I asked you the question and I, I, I think it would be instructive if you were to answer this question again. And that is, you know, this is, this is ARPA money's one-time money. And I'm curious, uh, this is a very, very large building. You know, your utilities and all the other costs that come with keeping a building like this. Uh, explain to me, and I think you did give me an answer about how you see yourself in the second, third, fourth, fifth year in having enough operating money to, to run all of these various, various aspects. Uh, could you address that again?
Absolutely. So again, this is going to be a collective impact model. Different entities, organizations, nonprofits, as well as, as healthcare providers in one space. And hopefully soon, a grocer who will pay rent in the facility. We also own this building free and clear. There is not a mortgage on it. We've been very fiscally responsible with moving forward with a project like this. I wouldn't have it any other way.
And then, uh, Laura, if you could answer this question, it's gone through the vetting. Where are we at in the process here? It, it did qualify under ARPA money through our legal department.
Counselor Flores.
It did. It had been through the vetting of the task force, um, made up of, you know, volunteers throughout the community. It has been through the internal task force, um, the mayor's recommendation to the city attorney to confirm that it, um, the request for the construction portion of certain parts of the building, uh, qualified for ARPA. And mostly it was in the, the back of the, of the first floor there that would serve the, um, the population of unhoused uh, for the restrooms and the showers and the washers and the dryers. And then also, um, assisting, um, um, in the, um, harm reduction portion. But not the grocery store.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, that sets the stage. Thank you.
Um, you know, I guess I'm struggling too because a million dollars, it's a lot of money. And that's the most amount of money that we would have given out if this passes. Why a million dollars? Or I guess, and can you send us a complete budget breakdown of what that million dollars would go towards?
I can. Our general contractor is here with us tonight. Um, he, you know, I can definitely send you a breakdown of the systems. It's probably going to end up being about a $2.5 million project total.
And where are you going to get the other one and a half million dollars?
We've already received, um, two other grants from Health Colorado for community reinvestment. Um, round one and round two. And we have also received a grant for, um, Colorado safety, public safety. I always forget their full name, but they are part of the state entity who allowed us to do a capital project.
So if this does not pass, is this project still going to happen? Can you pursue it with other grants?
It will, it will hurt. Not going to- It will, it will hurt. Not going to lie. It will hurt.
So yes, it will happen or no, it won't happen?
We have to make it happen.
And can you explain Jude a little bit more about when people access the services at this facility? Will they be using? Or will they be receiving, you know, drugs in that facility during that time that they're in that facility?
No, that's not legal.
Because it's different than, than safe injection sites.
So overdose prevention centers, there is not one ended. They're not legal. They're, they're not legal. If they're happening, they're happening underground. Um, and we can't prevent anything like that, but that is not something that any of us do, can't do. I'm not going to risk my life's work doing something illegal. That's for sure.
Thank you for the clarification. I want to remind everyone in the room too, that this is, this can be a controversial topic. And I know that people are, you know, can be heated about it, but please let's all be respectful while we're talking about this. Um, I appreciate that clarification, Jude. I know that, um, I, I have been getting some emails about that. And so I think that that helps to clarify a little bit about the services that you're actually going to be doing there. Um, Counselor Mastry, do you have anything else? One question.
They're not, they're not legal right now, but when they're legal, do you believe in them? And is that something you would offer?
You know, I, I had a feeling someone was going to talk to me, but I also reserve the right. I am here for a community center. I have a lot of opinions about a lot of different things, but right now I want to heal the neighborhood. That's all I'm here for tonight.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Solano. Thank you for the team um, at the Harm Reduction Center. Or SCARA, I guess, Southern Colorado Harm Reduction's Association.
Yeah, we dropped.
I actually had a-
Oh, I'm so sorry, Counselor Winter. It's-
That's okay.
I was reading the vibes of the room and I forgot you were there.
That's all right. That's all right. Um, I just had one question. I think, um, you covered all my other questions, but, um, that building has been a eyesore for many, many years. And I have to say, it's, it's worse, it's, it's worse now than it's ever been. Um, I mean, you can't keep windows from being broken. Uh, I mean, it, it looks horrible. So how do, how do you expect to survive there? And why do you think you're getting so much vandalism? With the windows getting broken?
Every business, if you walk down the street and talk to the the maintenance, the, the, um, oh gosh. The dryer, the repair service center, they're getting the windows broken. Neighbor Works is getting windows broken. We're getting windows broken where we're at in the Neighbor Works building. Everybody even the clamshell, everyone is getting windows broken. But ours is just more obvious because it's bigger and there's nothing to fix.
And there's nothing but windows on every side.
Yeah. So what we've done in the architectural drawings is we're going to be putting in closing metal doors over the windows in the evening to protect it. Because the whole goal and the point is to improve the neighborhood and bring resources so there is less crime and vandalism overall. Um, we see crime in broad daylight. Literally Friday, young man with brand new white Adidas on, he was not a homeless person and looking very clean and put together, stole a generator from the back of someone's truck right in front of Neighbor Works.
Yeah, yeah.
It happens all the time.
Yeah, it's getting worse and worse. I would agree with that. Um, that's, I guess that's the only question that I had. Um, you answered everything else already. Thanks.
Great. Signal other questions, Ms. Solano. Thank you so much for your time today. All right. Last on our agenda, Mr. Gallagher. I don't know where he is. This is going to be about the um, ARP allocation plan. And we're already over time. So the syncness.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of council. Very gratified. I was asked to uh give an update on the home ARP allocation plan following our Friday uh, community meeting in this uh, council chambers. The Home ARP Allocation Grant is to assist homeless and at-risk homelessness. Uh, during our public meeting, we had fifteen participants. All participants made comments. No uh, substantial changes were requested. After hearing uh, everyone's comments, I relayed council's information from the um, Monday meeting, um, March sixth. Um, requesting to reallocate the administration funds to construction. We received four comments against that. No, no comments in favor of staffers from Pueblo County were concerned uh, that we wouldn't have enough administration to fill the grant. Our consultant um, advised against it due to the term of the fifteen-year grant uh, performance period. And one uh, lady named Rita Gonzalez, um, who I hadn't seen in any previous meeting. Um, she has a Masters of Social Work and she explained that the uh the population which we were trying to serve was very challenged and the administrative funds may be helpful in uh, tackling problems that exist in the projects after they get underway. Um, that was a new concept that I hadn't um seen at the time. I knew it would be challenged, but I didn't uh I didn't see the connection of using those administrative funds to fall, to uh, fix those challenges should they arise. Council's comments from the sixth, Monday, the sixth was heard and um, basically, and to summarize, the uh request was for more units. And um, hearing that, what I would like to do is uh, double down and be more diligent to get project-based vouchers attached to any projects that um, that come this way. That will free up the operational money that we have in the new construction line item. And effectively put the same dollars where uh, we have. So we'll and if we are able to attach those project-based vouchers to, to the new projects, we will still be able to use, utilize the administration money and um, increase the construction funds. Our goal was always to leverage these funds with additional grants. And we will try and overload that, overlay those project-based vouchers so that um we can accomplish both goals. It would be staff's recommendation that we keep the plan uh, as published, working in concert with Pueblo County. And um, move forward from there. Thank you.
Did you have something there? Um, great. Thank you, Mr. Gallagher, for that presentation. Any questions from council? Uh, Counselor Mastry?
My day job prevented me from jumping on that Zoom the other day. Um, could you tell me how many people showed up to your meeting this last time?
Fifteen people uh, were present, all made comments. And uh uh, we did have some uh technical glitches starting hybrid meeting from, from this facility. So I, I'd hoped we hadn't lost you in the process, but uh we, we overcame our challenges and started the meeting uh, from there.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Gallagher, um, for that presentation. Signal other questions or comments. This work session is not going to be concluded, concluded at seven oh nine. What's going to happen next is that we'll have a ten-minute recess for those in the room before we start our regular session in about ten minutes after that. Thanks.